Monday, February 10, 2025, Greenswood County Schoolboy Meeting. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Yes, Chairman Ruston Jesse.
Here.
Vice Chair Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Pearson.
Here.
Ms. Reed Moore.
Here.
A call has been established.
Thank you. At this time, we're seeking a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel by the Code 2.2-3711A1.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We now move into closed session.
We'll be starting in, in, in five seconds. Five, four, three, two, one. Mr. Redman?
Thank you all.
All right. We'd like to say good evening to everyone. Again, this is our Monday, February tenth, two thousand twenty-five Greensville County School Board meeting. We're just coming out of a closed session. Clerk, can you certify?
Board Chair Ruston Jesse.
Yes.
Vice Chair Janet Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Pearson.
Yes.
Ms. Reed-Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. And what's the recommendation for the personnel matters that we discussed in closed sessions?
Mrs. Chairman, administration is seeking approval for matters discussed in, in closed session related to personnel.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any comments? All those in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hear none, that motion carries. Again, we would like to tell you good evening. And before we go to the Lord and prayer for our invocation, at this time, we do ask that you join us in a very brief but meaningful moment of silence for one of our own. Officer Temple is in very much need of our prayer this evening. So if we can take some time, he's fighting as best he can. So if we can just pause for a moment of silence for, for Officer Temple. Thank you. Dear Lord, we come to you this evening not only with big hearts but heavy hearts. And, and we hope that you continue to guide and instruct us not only to be good stewards of you, but also for our community and the members in our community. Please watch over this board as we continue to put our students first, support our faculty, and embrace this wonderful division that we call Greensville County Public Schools. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Roberts to read our mission and vision statement.
First of all, Greensville County Public Schools is committed to excellence. Our mission is, together with families and the community, Greensville County Public School is committed to providing a safe, rigorous, student-centered environment that empowers leaders. Our vision: cultivating excellence, transforming lives, and impacting futures.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. At this time, we are going to make a slight adjustment to our agenda. So we'd like to share that before we approve that. We will not be discussing item C under the superintendent's report. And we need to move item F up above item A to be our first topic under that superintendent's report. So with those changes, we are seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. That we move here, state it, agenda motion.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Next is our approval of the minutes. Seeking a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
That's second.
It's been moved and properly second. Again, all those in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The一致 have it. Next up is our approval of the warrants.
Make a motion to approve the warrants.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The一致 have it. Moving right along is number five, our superintendent's report and information items. And item A is our Guard nine-one-one update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to call Captain Pear and Greensville Finest Forward as we look forward to hearing an update on Guard nine-one-one. And, and Captain, we are certainly appreciative to your, your Greensville County Sheriff's Department for all you do to support Greensville County Public Schools.
Yes, thank you. Um, Lord, faculty, staff, and parents and business, so you guys know, we ventured with the school board approximately two years ago now, working on a program called Guard nine-one-one. As you all know, active shooters are a big thing in the country now. And it's something that we're trying to make sure we have in place here in our school system so that we have a seamless response between emergency personnel in the event something happens like that in one of our schools here in Greensville County. So we met with the representative with School Guard. They demoed it for us. We have been working diligently together to try to get this in place. Dr. Carey, Dr. Edwards, you guys have done a great job working with us trying to get it done. And we tested it last Thursday here in the gym with staff, and it worked seamlessly. As you guys know, if you've watched any news media from any active shooters that have occurred in the United States, getting responders to the school and getting them to know exactly where to respond to is very important. And it's something that has lacked in most all active shooter cases. With this program here, it gives all school personnel, to include teachers, an app on their smartphone, whether it's an Android, Apple, iPad, et cetera, or their computer, where if there is an active shooter in the school, all they have to do is press a button, slide to confirm, and it does two things simultaneously. It calls nine-one-one, and then all law enforcement, which would be the City of Emporia Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, the Virginia State Police, which is offices right down on Main Street, and the City Sheriff's Office. We have an app on our phone where it goes off immediately. And Thursday, when we tested this out in the gym, we found out that before he could give the location of where the shooter was taking place with dispatch, the law enforcement office in the gym already had the active shooter location so that we could go ahead and begin a response. This app is also in our nine-one-one center. So as soon as it's activated, the dispatchers are calling us seamlessly before the call is even being entered so that we can go ahead and get people on the way. And I think that's pretty good when you can have an alert to everyone within thirty to forty-five seconds to go ahead and start having people moving this way. I think that's almost unheard of in trying to get a nine-one-one call, get information, and get folks started as quick as possible. So we had demoed it last week, and they asked us to come back tonight to do it again just to show you guys when it goes off, just how fast our phones activate and how quick our nine-one-one center will call us on the radio and let us know. So with that, whenever you guys are ready. Here, if you want to go ahead and set that off.
Would you show the board the app also up here and to all the audience?
And with that app, the top button is the one you would press during an active shooter. They also have one where the school board or the principal can send out a message such as, you know, "Schools closed tomorrow due to snow" or what have you, "Extracurricular activities are canceled." Or it could be that a teacher in a classroom, it needs assistance, and they don't have access to a phone or someone's close by to get help. Everyone within the school will get that notification. And with this alert here, it notifies all law enforcement on and off duty within a twenty-mile radius and every person within the school system that has this app. Whenever you're ready. App's already gone off. That's how fast it is. All it takes is one person to activate it. It doesn't take everyone here at the school to activate it. One person to activate it. And that's how fast we get notified, on and off duty.
And Captain Pear, and we consulted with Captain Pear and the Sheriff's Department also. And we no longer have lock boxes out front. We have follow-ups that the Greensville County Sheriff's Department and also Emporia City Department because in consulting with Sergeant, excuse me, consulting Captain Pear, time is of essence. And if an officer came to Greensville County High School, Greensville Elementary School, or the middle school and had to configure a lock box, we were losing precious seconds. And so now, the Sheriff's Department can enter the building instantly and have access to all things Greensville County High School, elementary school, and middle school without fiddling with a lock box in front of the door. So thank you for that.
And that is true, and we greatly appreciate that because when we had the active shooter that we were not sure was in hooks a couple of years ago that went statewide, that was one of the struggles. We're at doors trying to get in, and staff is apprehensive because they're not sure what's going on. We weren't sure what was going on. And you had staff in the office with multiple doors with people coming to saying, "Let me in, let me in," and no one knew what was going on. In the event that someone's being, if someone's in the school shooting, time is of essence. We need to get in as fast as we can. So we appreciate that as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So with that drill, all of the faculty know exactly what to do?
So Dr. Carey and I had met together. They had alerted all principals to let their staff know to be here last Thursday. And we have also sent them the YouTube video. That's how we were trained. It's basically, all you have to do is get your staff to watch a YouTube video. It tells them exactly what to do. It's two-step. You press it, slide it, and it makes the phone call for you. It's very, very simple. I know that last week, some staff was out. I think sicknesses are running rampant through the school system like it is through our community. So there were some folks absent. So I'm not sure how the school want to handle on getting the staff that weren't present to sign off to say they know how to use it. But it, it's very easy to use.
Okay. Maybe I didn't answer my question clear.
Okay.
I understand about the app.
Sure.
But once the app goes off, do the faculty and the personnel at the school know what to do then? When we did our, when y'all did your training?
So we did just the drill of activating the app. We didn't get into the meat and the potatoes of this is how the school and the staff are to respond for an active shooter. It was mainly just to test the program, just to get the staff's buy-in. Because with anything new, you got to show people exactly what the benefit is of it, and that's how you get their buy-in. So that's what we did then. We didn't actually go in through. The school's SOPs on this is, excuse me, this is how you, this is how we're going to act in the event of an, of an active shooter. If that's something that the school system would like at such time, we can all get together and take care of that.
Good afternoon. So of course, we've got now Guard nine-one-one's a three-pronged approach. The teacher, assistance, nine-one-one only, and then the intruder, which the button we just pushed tonight. If you need immediate assistance, for instance, if you have an active shooter on campus, then that teacher will push that button in the middle of the app. So we've had ongoing conversations with teachers about the many uses of the three buttons. The first button, as I indicated, if you need, if a teacher needs assistance, then you will hit that teacher assistance button. If you need nine-one-one only, you can hit that button. But lastly, if you need an officer for whatever the, the cause is, and we know that cause has been lately across the nation, has been for active shooters, then they will hit that intruder alert button, which would send out the notifications across, within a twenty-five mile radius to all active law enforcement personnel. Any other questions? Thank you.
Dr. Carey, go over that, that we had the active shooter drill at the elementary school also.
Right, sure. So on January second, we also had an active shooter drill, the G E S. And so we had the Greensville County Sheriff's Department to enter the building and really portray an, an active shooter. So Captain Hines was able to shoot blanks, you know, through the building. So it gave you that real-life feel that if you were involved in an active shooter scenario, then this is what would occur. Of course, we had some, some staff who had some heartburns because, you know, if you haven't been around a shotgun blast or a loud bang of such, and that noise is very intense, it will rattle you. And so that was the, the purpose of the drill, to give you that lifelike atmosphere so that you're able to think through and to act accordingly. Of course, safety is a paramount. And so with that drill, we, we understood that it was a drill, but it was definitely well worth, time well spent. We are looking forward to having another phase, we'll say phase two of that active shooter drill where we actually have more support from outside agencies within the Commonwealth, that being the state troopers, so that we could have like a command center set up. Out of that drill, various conversations were given birth, you know, where would be a unification location in the event we have to reunite students with their parents. And so we're working through all of those processes. And the next, the next drill we have, we'll be able to have even, even more support from outside agencies. And then hopefully, we will have that opportunity to provide, provide the parents and staff alike with some unification drills, processes as well. Thank you, guys. Okay, so if, if someone pushes a button, say if a teacher pushes the button that we have intruder alert and nine-one-one is called, and the button that I pushed tonight, the very, the, the one in, in the middle of the screen that activates the law enforcement across the Commonwealth, well, Greensville County and, and as far, I guess, west as Brunswick County, and then some points in between. The principal would get on the, on the intercom and give their code. So they would, for instance, G E S would say code red, stage two. So we know that from working with law enforcement, we are also trying to make these codes more... We're not gonna say, lifelike is not the word I'm looking for, but we want to make it in plain English. That's the conversations that we're having with the Sheriff's Department. When they're having a call, they don't need to decipher from what's, what may be code red at G E S, maybe code blue at the high school. And so we want to make sure that we're all on the same page. And so that's, that's part of our conversation that we are having. Right now, we're leaving it set because we think that the faculty and staff at each school, they understand the codes, and they have kind of gone through those when they're having their, their conversations with their faculty and, and staff and parents alike. But at some point, we're going to have to come back to the drawing board and have a uniform voting system across the board. And so, so yes, hopefully, I've answered that question as far as what happens when you push that button. If, if I were to push the teacher assistant button, then that would go to the gatekeepers and the principal. So the gatekeepers have identified their gatekeepers at each school. But again, if you push the intruder alert and nine-one-one alert button, then that will go to the gatekeepers, the, the principal, and of course, law enforcement.
I don't want to, I mean to prolong, but I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. It's been years, I won't say how many, since I was in elementary school, and we did a fire drill. When we heard the fire drill, the button go off, teachers and students immediately knew what to do.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? We proceeded to the next, the nearest exit. Everybody, you grab whatever you, your valuables, and you got out of the building. And I guess what I'm asking is, is this along the same lines as a fire drill? Of course, I know that is not the same procedure. I know it's not the same thing because of, it's, you know, fire drill versus active shooting. But it could be an active shooter on one end of the building, but then it could be a situation where what do the others do on the other hand? You know, so are we all on the same page as far, as far as that's concerned? That's why I was asking, are, are we, is the staff trained what to do in certain situations?
Sure. So at each school, the, the principals and, and myself alike, we're all working through what to do in an event this button is pushed. We all, we all know that preliminaries will tell us to follow the codes presented by the principal when they get on the intercom. And so we are, we're having ongoing conversations to make sure that that's a seamless process. Right. Well, the research is telling us that we're, we're no longer trying to stand and fight. They're saying that you need to hide or run, get away from the, the threat. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Captain Pear.
Yes, sir.
Next up is item B, our corrective action plan update.
Thank you, Mr. Jesse, and to the board. Greensville County Public Schools is under a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Education. And each month, we go over the progress that the division is making to come from under the memorandum of understanding. And we come fully from under the memorandum of understanding only when all schools have reached full accreditation status. Our five priority areas under the corrective action plan are priority area number one, academic and student success. Under academic and student success, we attended the Region Eight Superintendent's meeting, facilitated data discussions, attended the Region Eight Superintendent's meeting twice, as one was in the morning and one was in the afternoon. Met with internal auditor, the Chief Inclusion Officer, on sped within the division as we completed our maintenance of effort and moment and time reports in Greensville County Public Schools. Conference with Dr. Ballard of the Office of School Quality on January the thirty-first as we are coming off of the cusp where the board chair and myself had our conference with State Superintendent Dr. Lisa Coons. The superintendent also met with the National Final Site Superintendents discussing academic progress, chronic absenteeism, and progress toward achieving status under our SOLs in the Commonwealth. We continuously am thankful for our Unit of Justice team headed up by Mrs. Marva Dunn, who is our project manager, and the team that you see is on the board, are continuously having unit of justice training sessions on the twenty-first, twenty-eighth, and the fourth, the seventeenth, the twenty-fourth, and the third. And now, certain members of the team are entering the next phase of unit of circle, unit of justice circle training. And that training will begin tomorrow. And we are fortunate to have Ms. Dunn and others come before and give us a report later on in our meeting. As always, we have conference calls with our liaison, Dr. Johnson. Conference calls are done weekly with the Office of School Quality. We have our directors, coordinators, and supervisors working on the work session. Our next session will be February the eighteenth, and we will have strategic plan review, keep performance indicators facilitated by Dr. Scott Baker with the Berkeley Group. Under leadership and governance, the school board chair attended the Capitol Conference sponsored by the Virginia School Board Association on January the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. The superintendent and board members met with the city and the county for the quarterly two-by-two-by-two meetings where we have candid discussions about what's going on in Greensville County Public Schools, the county, and the city. Under operations and support services, we are expanding, expending the security grant funds. Mr. Winningham, the internal auditor, Mr. Ryder, are looking into how we are going to spend the remaining of the grant funds along with Dr. Carey. And also, we're looking forward to the completion of the walkway at Greensville Elementary School. Priority number four, under human resource leadership. Staff intent forms have been sent out and submitted for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Staffing meetings with principals will begin to occur this week for the twenty-two-five, twenty-six school year. We are in discussion to have a partnership with the YMCA. It was a result to membership as we continuously focus on health and wellness. Frontline training for bus drivers and maintenance staff was held, and we're continuing to update our policies, which is an ongoing process. Under community relations and communications, which is priority number five, where we develop and implement practice to effectively communicate with stakeholders. We're releasing still GCPS now. We're continuously updating the website on social media platforms. School events are posted on social media platforms and have a meeting with the city manager, most recently, and we'll have a meeting with the county administrator later. manager, most recently, and will have a meeting with the county administrator later this month. Mr. Chairman and to the board, that is my corrective action plan update on our continuous progress as we move to have fully accredited schools in Greensville County Public Schools.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Edwards? All right, moving along is item C, special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lady call, this ready forward to the podium to go through our special recognitions for the month of February.
Chairman Jesse, Vice Chairperson Roberts, board members, Dr. Edwards, colleagues and guests, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Greensville County Public Schools takes pride in recognizing its staff and students for their hard work. I like to emphasize that recognizing these accomplishments reflect our ongoing commitment to the goals outlined in our strategic plan. Tonight, we have quite a few recognitions, so bear with me. I've asked some friends to join me to help us move this smoothly. First up for student recognition, we have Titus Ann. I would like to ask Ms. Posey James and Titus to come forward. Titus is a junior here at Greensville County High School who scored a 600, perfect score on his English SOL. Join me in congratulating Titus for the score of 600. He's here tonight with his parents. Titus, keep up the great work. We're so proud of you. You have anything to say, Ms. Doc Posey?
Okay.
Yeah. Next, last month, if you remember, a couple, just a couple of weeks ago, we recognized middle school students for the Fourth Circuit Court Black History Art Contest. So we're gonna bring this person back up here because we left out some very important information last week, last couple of weeks.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, Dr. Edwards. As you know, we had the art contest with our students who participated. One of the things, well, the thing that they had to discuss was how would you address the right to assemble peaceably through video or art? We since have had the virtual ceremony for those students, and we found out some additional information. One was that they competed with four other states in order to win this. It was Maryland, North Carolina, South Carolina, West Virginia, and then, of course, us. So for them to sweep all three categories is really special. So I just wanted to come back in and give that update. And we also know that their artwork will be displayed in the U.S. Courts of Appeals in the building, and all of the judges will be able to see it. We had judges on the line with the students. It was really a wonderful experience, and we were grinning ear to ear. And we're so proud of our students for participating and for competing with five other states to win the top three.
Thank you, Ms. Person, for sharing.
Thank you, Ms. Person.
Now on to staff recognitions. First, we have Dr. Kelvin Edwards and Dr. Janee Robinson, who participated and completed a course and received a certificate in education finance from Georgetown University. We have a certificate that reads, "In recognition of the successful completion of the requisite course of study and by virtue of authority granted by charter enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America and Congress assembled, Georgetown University hereby confers upon Dr. Kelvin M. Edwards, Sr. and Dr. Janee Robinson a certificate in education finance." Congratulations. Thank you. Next up, as you all know, heard, we have relocated, we being the central office. We have relocated from 105 Ruffin Street to 1300 Greensville County Circle Drive. We would like to give a huge shout out to some special people to help make this possible. First, to our maintenance team for their hard work in getting us moved in and set up at our new office space with a smile on their face every day. We really appreciate you guys, and your efforts are, they don't go unnoticed. So we wanted to take some time to say thank you. If you guys could please come forward when your name is called, Mr. Harvey Seifer. Corey Clayton. David Fadun. Johnny Phillips. Donnie White. And Jerry Winningham. Thank y'all so much.
To the maintenance team, I just want to say to you all, this, this, things can't happen around Greensville County Public Schools without you all. We've had several days of inclement weather. It looks like we're having another one tomorrow. You know, while others are getting some rejuvenation time, not driving on the highway, you gentlemen are braving the highways, coming back each and every time to make sure that Greensville County Public Schools is operable. And that is so commendable, because without you all, the way these icy conditions have hit us, we could have been out of school longer. We appreciate you so much, and thank you for all you do, because when it's hot, we need air; when it's cold, we need heat; when the roads are full of ice, the parking lots, they don't get cleared magically, they get cleared by the work and efforts that you all do. Can't say thank you enough. And then to put on top of that, move a whole office in two weeks that has been there for 50 years. So, gentlemen, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. During our move, and because of their diligence, we did not skip a beat in operations daily. So this next group of young men, we would like to bring forward to thank you guys for connecting us, Mr. Thomas Redman. Because I know they got plenty of phone calls. They would come connect somebody, and before they can get across the street, they were called back. Clifton Batt. Austin Rodriguez. And Kyle Rodriguez. Thank y'all.
Mr. Redman, I echo the same thing to you and your team. Moving an office is one thing, but when you talk about moving computers to make sure everybody's set up and the network is working, we thank you, because we can't do nothing without the internet. Thank you all so much for all the hard work and diligence you've done as we've transitioned. Thank you so much.
February is School Resource Officer Month, and February 15th is National School Officer, School Resource Officer Day. And it's celebrated every year on February 15th. This year's on a Saturday, so we're going to recognize them tonight. Our resource officers serve as important bridges between the youth and law enforcement in our community, and we thank you for that. Also, our school safety officers, we want to thank them also for their commitment in ensuring that our students are safe, staff is safe. So tonight, we have Deputy Epps among us, who serves at the Greensville Elementary and wherever else we need him. So Deputy Epps, thank you. And School Safety Officer Kenneth Barham, who also serves at G E S.
Thank you for keeping us safe, gentlemen.
National School Counseling Week was observed February 3rd to 7th, with the theme being "School Counseling: Helping Students Thrive." Tonight, we want to recognize our incredible school counselors for the vital role they play in supporting our students' academic, social, and emotional well-being. Thank you all for all that you do to help our students thrive. Serving Greensville Elementary, Ms. Vivian King Jackson. Serving Wyatt Middle School, Alitha Baker. And serving Greensville County High School, Ms. Coletta Edwards Warren.
Thank you.
Thank you. February is also CTE Month. Career and Technical Education is celebrated in February across the nation to recognize the achievement and accomplishments of CTE programs. This year's theme is "Celebrate Today, Own Tomorrow." Tonight, we want to recognize our incredible director and teachers for the vital role they play in preparing students for success beyond the classroom. Tonight with us, we have First Sergeant Clarence Bowdre. ROTC. Ms. Kathy Drummond. Who assists us with cosmetology and all the other courses over there. Ms. India Johnson, fashion career. Ms. Carla Martindale. Business. Lieutenant Colonel Azar Moore. ROTC. And they're all Greensville County High Schools. And last, but certainly not least, serving Wyatt Middle School, Erica Randolph.
The Career Fair is February the 20th at Greensville County High School. We invite you all to come out. It's going to be from 9:30 to 12, 9:30 to 12:30. We are expecting approximately 50 businesses and agencies, so please come out and support.
I would like to ask the principals to please come forward. You don't have to say anything, I promise. So due to changes in the state's timeline, we announced the Teacher of the Year for each school at this year's convocation. Before we announce the Division Teacher of the Year, we would like to recognize each of our school winners. So from Greensville Elementary, Caitlin Gregory. Ms. Gregory has served G E S for six years, and this year she's teaching fourth grade reading. Wyatt Middle School, Ms. Tanya McBean. Ms. McBean has been teaching for 18 years. She currently teaches seventh grade English. Greensville County High School, Ms. Kayla Robinson. Kayla has been teaching for six years, and she teaches biology here at Greensville County High School. So Chairman Jesse and Dr. Edwards, could you please come up?
It gives us, it gives us great pride and honor when you recognize our teachers in Greensville County Public Schools. When you say an honor to be in the classroom, we salute all of our teachers, all of our professions. But tonight, we're recognizing what we would say the best of the best in Greensville County Public Schools. And our Teacher of the Year, without further ado, belongs to Caitlin Gregory of Greensville Elementary. Greensville County Public Schools in recognition of Caitlin Gregory, Green Technics School Division, Division Teacher of the Year, outstanding contribution to the education of children, February the 10th, 2025. And Ms. Gregory will move forward to compete regionally and at the state level.
Your packet has already been submitted. Congratulations. Okay, great.
Mr. Chair, Board, Dr. Edwards, I'll say this like I do every time I get an observation, it's easier to talk in front of children than it is adults, so you'll have to excuse me. I can't tell you how much of an honor it is to have this. My mom's here today, and she is the person that made me the educator that I am today. And I grew up in Greensville County Public Schools. I spent all of my time volunteering and just being in the area. I'm a proud graduate, and just even when seeing all the students' names pop up, knowing I taught that kid, I changed their life. It's just amazing, and I can't thank you enough. So thank you.
Thank you. And what an honor it is to have mom and daughter.
Yes.
At Greensville Elementary School. Mom and daughter, would you come, please? Take this picture, I'll tell you. I tell you. Now that's truly what you call following in mother's footsteps. Let's give it another round of applause.
Few more, y'all. The Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors has designated the 3rd week in February as the SBA School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. We want to give a huge shout out to Ms. Mary Lou Phelps and Quatia D'Shea for the work they do to support Greensville County School Board. February is also School Board Appreciation Month. So this month, we honored the dedication of over 800 school board members in the state of Virginia during the SBA School Board Appreciation Month. This year, the theme is Champions of Opportunity, Advocates for Excellence. It highlights the efforts made by school board members to create pathways for student achievement and innovation. Tonight, we recognize the hard work and dedication of Chairman Ruston Jesse, Vice Person Janet Roberts, Mr. Ronald Pearson, and Ms. Bessie Reed Moore. Join me in thanking our dedicated school board members for their leadership, commitment, and service to our students, staff, and community of Greensville County Public Schools. Please come forward. Thank you. For me to be finished, right? All right, Division Competition Awards for the month of January. Despite the challenges January brought from weather and sickness, we appreciate the resilience and dedication shown by both our staff and students. Cleanest school goes to Greensville Elementary. And the best staff and student attendance, Greensville County High School. Thank you, that's all I have.
Before we move on, I know it seems like it was two days ago, but Dr. Edwards and I were just speaking about it one more time. It was the first award that we gave, but I don't know that we quite understand the complexity of a perfect score, whether in 3rd grade, much less 12th grade, 11th grade. And this gentleman got a 600 on a high school SOL, so can we please have you stand up one more time and let us give you your flowers? And as I always joke with my fellow board members, so family comes first in my household. So sir, you have a paid tutor in position anytime you're ready to tutor my children. Moving right along, we'll go to Item D, our Unit of Justice Presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call for Ms. Marva Dunn, who will give us her presentation. Ms. Dunn, thank you.
Chairman Jesse, nice to have you here. We're the school board members, and all of you gathered here. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to share with you the information about our unit of justice program. Ms. Watson will come forward and help me talk to you with my presentation. While she's doing that, I want everybody to close up. Relax. Please, I want you to just think, love and kindness, love and kindness, love and kindness. No matter what you hear or see when you open your eyes, no matter what you see, when you open your eyes or hear.
I don't know what your problem is.
And no matter what you see or hear, love and kindness.
I don't know what your problem is. I will probably, everybody's trying to, you will give me my phone back. Is that stuff? You're gonna give me my phone back. You're gonna give me my phone back. Do you hear me? I don't care what y'all say. Y'all gonna give me my phone back. I will tell you like this right now, y'all gonna give me my phone back. Oh, my momma, y'all gonna give me my phone back. My momma pay that fee. I got a job, I go to work every day. Y'all gonna give me my phone back. I hear you, but no, it's not. But I know my momma, y'all gonna give me my phone back. Law needs change, and this messed up, really. All right. That what? You can proceed to your first lesson.
That is your first session, Unit of Justice in Ed. That is what we are learning to do. That is what we are learning to do. Unit of Justice in Ed is based on love and kindness and learning to communicate with your students, even your peers and the parents, to accept them where they are. Now had I gotten loud with her, or even said, "Look, you're not gonna talk to me like that, you just need calm down," I would never have been able to get through to her. So that's what we are taught in Unit of Justice. Why implemented here at Greensville County High School? It teaches the importance of establishing relationship with your kids. You know, back during the day when some of us were Ms. Roberts and, I don't know, but my name, and Ms. Reed Moore, we probably were raised when you said, "You do what I say do, right?" You don't have a voice. But today's kids, we just can't work with them like that. And you know, I'm from the old school, and if I recognize the fact that we got to change how we deal with these kids and give them a voice, okay, how loud they get sometimes, give them a voice, and then try to de-escalate them, it's time for all of us to recognize that. It's time for all of us to recognize that. And that's one of the reasons why I worked so hard to try to bring the Unit of Justice in Ed to Greensville County High School. The circle process gives everyone an opportunity to talk, no one is judged. Everyone, one of the first rules of it is that this is a safe space, a safe space for the students. They feel free to talk about whatever it is that's going on in their mind. And it is suggested by our instructors that teachers actually start their day with the Unit of Justice Circle, give the kids an opportunity to unwind, and you may have a more productive day when it comes to academic accomplishments. Why have it at Greensville County High School again? Because according to the Safe School Information from Virginia Department of Education and school year 2010, and you will have that in the package that you all have, 2010, 2011 at Armstrong High School in Richmond, Virginia, the total number of incidents the year before they incorporated the Unit of Justice program was 583. Let me get my glasses to be sure that's correct. And the number dropped to 150 the second year after implementing the Unit of Justice program. You have additional information in your handbooks about the Armstrong School. According to Ms. Judy Carter, principal at Hopewell High School, the school year 2022 to 2023, the first quarter, they had state-reported incidents that totaled 213. The school year 2023, 2024, after implementing the Unit of Justice, state-reported incidents were 100. So that alone tells you that it can work. It can work. I also sent you all, school board members, a video where the principal talks about the Unit of Justice program in Hopewell. So I just sent it this evening. Hopefully, when you get home, you'll have a chance to listen to it, and it will definitely, I think, enlighten you as to how they made it work and why they think it's important. Some of that information is also in the package that you have. What does it take to make it work? It takes a sincere commitment and willingness to try something different. Congratulations, Dr. Edwards, for being another superintendent in the state of Virginia bold enough to try this. Greensville County High School has made a minimum amount of success with the Unit of Justice program. Unit of Justice has the potential to make a significant positive impact in changing the school culture, not just among the students, but also the staff. It helps people to recognize and acknowledge what they need to change, and also get them to stop and think about ways to change their behavior. The program has been implemented mostly here on Greensville County High School campus and the refocused class. I have witnessed a change in the behavior and the attitudes of students in refocals. As a matter of fact, one student said, in so many words, they were not her exact words, but we were talking while I was there and I was observing them implement the circle. And as a matter of fact, she was facilitating it. She was facilitating the circle, and she said to the students, one student, she said, "Okay, why are you here?" And the student told her what he had done, and she said, "Now what else could you have done differently? What other type of behavior could you have done? Now that's, that's an improvement." That she was actually facilitating. And that young lady said, "You know, the old me would do this, but the new me is gonna do it different, but the test is gonna be when I go back to Greensville County High School." And that is the test. I saw changes in the refocused schools, but once they get back here, they need the same support, they need follow-up, and someone to check with them periodically, and maybe give them some of the same support that they got in refocus in order to keep them on track. Ms. Turner has been a great help, but she wouldn't speak today. She told me not to even ask her if she had anything else to say. So I don't want y'all to think that I'm just taking over, she just wouldn't speak, okay? You have in your package a report of what we have done, what's left to do. You have additional information, as I said before, about Hopewell. You have a report from Dr. Halls and one from Ms. Turner's class. Those are the only reports that I have received to date. Are there any questions?
I commend you all for being creative and shedding a different light to Greensville County Public Schools. I just see that one thing that I have a question is that with the success that y'all have had thus far, you said that there in your report, there's minimal. How can we make things maximum?
Well, I'm gonna share some of my ideas with Dr. Edwards, but I will say that one of the things that would definitely, what's needed is commitment. Commitment to be willing to change your entire thought process about how we discipline kids, because we're so used to the old way. So it's, you know, it's always a challenge to try something new. But a commitment, training, more training for staff, being sure that you have the right staff, and you'll see in that video that one thing that the principal at Hopewell High School talks about is that it's important to have the right people trained to implement it, and just continuing to nip away at it one step at a time.
So how many kids do we have in right now?
How many kids do we have where?
In the program. Do we have, I mean, are we in the Unit of Justice program? We don't have any kids right now, correct?
We don't have any, I can't give you that data because I don't have that data. That data was not submitted to me as to whether or not we have any schools, any kids actively participating in circles who have misbehaved. I do know, and I don't have the data, and I don't believe Dr. Halls may have put it in his report or asked him for a report, the number that he has in his classroom now. When I was there last semester, on a regular basis, it was probably about six, and I believe all of them are back in their regular schools now. Now how they're doing now, I don't know because I don't have that report either. I've asked, but I don't have that report either. But once I get that report, I'd be more than happy to submit it to the board. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. And Ms. Dunn, with the whole Unit of Justice team that's present, please stand that's participating. When you, when you talk about extra commitment, it's been 17 weeks, believe it or not, that this team has been on Unit of Justice training, which takes place every Tuesday at 4:30 PM to 6:00 PM. So when we talk about 212 degrees going to effort, effort, going to extra effort, this is another shining example of going to extra effort. And Ms. Dunn, thank you, because again, this could not be possible unless a pioneer like yourself stated that, hey, let's look at a new approach. And you brought forth their information, and not only did you And you brought forth their information, and not only did you bring forth the information, you went out and sought funding, funding. An amount of $35,000 from our partners here in Roses in Emporia to make this possible. So we're gonna be fully committed to the effort, but I wanted to recognize the team that was present. And let's look forward to moving forward in Greensville County Public Schools as we look at a new way and a new direction to re-channel our students who are facing challenges. So I want to say thank you and thank you for the presentation. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, next up on our agenda is Item E, School Performance and Support Framework.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call forth our Director of Testing and Accountability, Ms. Cynthia Whitaker. As you know, things are never stay the same. We're in a pragmatic society. And our state has introduced a new performance and support mechanism for us. And here to give us an introduction, Ms. Whitaker, we look forward to the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Jesse, Vice Chair Roberts, Board Members, Dr. Edwards, and all of the attendants. The Virginia Board of Education has adopted a new accreditation process, the School Performance and Support Framework, which will be used for accreditation beginning with this current school year. So the School Performance and Support Framework has four performance categories. So you can either be distinguished, that's 90 points and above. So that's where your schools are exceeding the state's expectation. You can be on track and score 80 to 89 points, where your schools are meeting the state's expectation. Or you can be off-track, scoring 65 to 79 points. Your schools are not meeting the state's expectation and will receive additional support from VDOE. Or you can be needs-intensive support. So if you score below 65 points, your needs-intensive report and the schools are significantly not meeting the state's expectation and will receive more intensive support, Tier 3, from VDOE, beginning in the fall of 2025. All right, so each of these, each school has different indicators. So the elementary school indicators for the state of Virginia will be mastery of 65%. That 65% will consist of reading SOL and VAP tests. 22.5% will consist of reading SOL and VAP tests. 22.5% will consist of math SOL and VAP assessments. 10% science SOL and VAP assessments and 10% for progress in English, English language proficiency. 25% will consist of growth. Growth will be 12.5% for both reading and math. And then 10% for readiness. Readiness consists of chronic absenteeism, which would be 5%, and the five Cs performance task, 5%. This school year, chronic absenteeism will be 10% because the performance tasks have not yet been developed. So attendance will be 10% for readiness this year alone. Now, what the state did was put the school's data into this framework. The last year's data was put into this framework, so the new accreditation framework. And elementary, GES's overall framework score for last year was a 77.7, and that would give them a performance level of off-track. So if this was this current year, GES would have been off-track with last year's data. All right, middle school indicators. The mastery for middle school is 60%. So reading SOL and VAP assessments will be 20%. Math SOL and VAP assessments, 20%. Science SOL and VAP assessments, 10%. And progress in English language proficiency is 10%. Growth will be 20% for middle school. So growth will be 10% reading and 10% math. And then we have readiness, which will be 20% for middle school. Chronic absenteeism will be 5%. Coursework, excuse me, advanced coursework will be 7.5%. And advanced coursework will be those students who are taking an end-of-course math test, I mean, math class in middle school. So if they're taking the Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II in middle school, we get credit for them taking those advanced courses. All right, and then 7.5% for the five Cs career performance task. And again, this year, because they're, they have not developed the performance task yet, chronic absenteeism will be 10% for middle school and advanced coursework will be 10% for middle school. So EWY's assessment data was put into the new framework. Their score was 81 for la, would have been for last year, and their performance level would have been on track. But because EWY has, is federally identified as a targeted school, it's a Targeted Support Improvement School, TSI. If your school is federally identified, you drop down one performance category. So because of that, because they are federally identified, they would have dropped down to off-track. So any school in the state of Virginia that is federally identified will drop back a performance category. And high school indicators, mastery is 50%. So reading SOL VAP test will be 15%. Math SOL and VAP test will be 15%. Science SOL and VAP test will be 10%. The progress in English language proficiency will be 10%. Graduation is by itself with 15%. So the federal graduation indicator, which is your, your regular four-year adjusted cohort rate, will count for 15%. And readiness will be 35%. Readiness will consist of chronic absenteeism, 5%. Six-year extended year graduation rate with applied studies. So we have students who do not receive a standard diploma, they receive an applied studies diploma. They will not count in the graduation 15% four-year rate, but they will count for 5% of the six-year extended graduation rate with applied studies for 5%. And then we have the Ready for Life 3E framework, which is 25%. The three E's stand for enrollment, employment, and enlistment. So that is 25% of the indicator. And Greensville County High School's data was put into the framework and their overall score was 90.1 for last year, which will give them a performance level of distinguished. So this is the new accreditation framework that will be put into effect beginning with this school year's data. Any questions?
Just one for clarification for everyone. Is the information shared as far as the numbers are based on last year?
That is correct, it's based on last year's data, the 20, 23, 24 school year, so last school year.
So this is something that we can report back on after this school year?
That is correct. It'll probably be close to October because we have to wait on VIVAS to provide the growth data.
Any other questions for Ms. Whitaker?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker.
Next up is our lactation stations update.
I'd call forth Dr. Carey to give us an update on lactation stations, which is a policy that all schools in the Commonwealth must adhere to. And we have done due diligence, so without further ado, Dr. Carey.
Good evening again, code GBEF. I'd like to please to report that lactation stations have been identified at each school.
This is a policy that all schools must adhere to and want to commend our principals, our maintenance staff, and Dr. Carey for getting us up to date with the identification of the location because we want to make sure that our new mothers have a safe place where they can provide at these lactation stations for their newborns. So thank you to you and the team, Dr. Carey, and to our principals for identifying this space that was needed to make sure we were in compliance.
Any questions? Thank you. Next is our Board Member Committee reports. I'll be happy to share out for all of us that our next work session is Tuesday, February 25th, in which we'll go over our policy and our findings subcommittee. Any other reports?
Hi, just a brief report on the governor's school. It is running well and we're, have some students who are participating. The next board meeting, Dr. Edwards, I want to remind you.
February 19th.
February 19th, which is coming up very soon. We will be attending that for updates from the governor's school board.
Thank you. All right, next category is our action items. First one under that is our Memorandum of Understanding Mathematica Incorporated.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a, Mathematica is something that we need to incorporate along with Ms. Marina Agana presented the information for Mathematica and administration has recommended approval as we have vetted this and we feel that it's something that we need to bring to the division and Mathematica. And we certainly appreciate Ms. Agana's efforts in getting us this MOU drawn up. So we're seeking approval so that we can implement Mathematica into Greensville County Public Schools.
Any questions or comments from the board? All right, here none seeking a motion?
So move.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor making a noise by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Here none, the ayes have it. Next up is Item B under our action items, Restraint and Seclusion Policy and Procedure Manual.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and to the board, yeah, we are seeking approval for the restraint and seclusion policy and procedure manual. And at this time, I would call Dr. Scott and Ms. Williams for it in case the board may have any questions. This is a policy that has been revisited and we would like to put this in place. Administration is seeking approval from the board for this policy for restraint and seclusion.
Any comments or questions for them, for the policy? We're good, thank you guys. Seeking a motion?
I move that we approve the policy on this restraint and seclusion.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor making a noise by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it and motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Section 8, which is our public comments. As a reminder, any citizen may address the board at any regular meeting. Persons wishing to appear before the school board should contact the superintendent or the school board clerk, submit a request, or complete the sign-up form for placement on the agenda. The chair is responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting and shall rule on such matters as the appropriateness of the subject being presented and the length of time for such presentation. No one will be allowed to make personal attacks on any Greensville County Public School personnel when addressing the board. No one will be allowed to make additional presentations until everyone has had an opportunity to make an initial presentation. The allotted period of time with the board during public comment is three minutes. Board clerk, do we have anybody here to speak?
Yes, Mr. Charles White.
Okay, we'd like to welcome Mr. Charles White to the podium.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, my name is Charles White. I live at 239th, Legislate Grove. I live between the elementary school and Wyatt. When the president gave the order to lower the flag to honor a fallen veteran, I waited five days and none of the flags were lowered. Now, I'm a combat veteran. I was in Vietnam. I was in Adrenian Valley, I was in Ashaw Valley. I remember the sons and daughters that were brought home under that flag. So the only thing we want is a little respect. I believe that you all do not even have a policy on the displaying of the flag. I'm shocked at my federal veterans that did not say anything. I contacted the elementary school. It was just a word, "We'll comply." I contacted the middle school. I ended up going to my representative on the board and he contacted the superintendent. Why is it so hard for us to do what's right? That was my first point. My second point is Wednesday of last week, those, I came out of my driveway, there was a funny colored bus coming out of the elementary school. And this Wednesday, I decided I would be there and follow. So I did. And it led me to Southampton Street, to church on Southampton Street. My question is, why are we taking our kids on school time, out of school, to take them to a church? If they need to learn education, I mean, religion, that should be done at home, in the church, or at the school. We need to prepare our kids to compete in the workforce in industrial complex. Right now, the powers-to-be are trying to do away with public education. And we are falling into the same old trap. For hundreds of years, we couldn't be educated. Three public educations started in South Carolina during reconstruction by black folks. And now we gonna be complicit in doing away with it? I sure hope we wake up. We need to bring those kids back to the school. And kids like the one that we honor for the 600 score. Kids learn better from peer tutors. Plus, I followed the bus. The bus went across the line at the red light. If an 18-wheeler came, the whole line would have to back up because he was, he was illegal. My question is, what type of license does he have? Normally, a bus like that, just the same old Cessna license. Yet, bus drivers in the school system have to have CDL. Does he have a CDL? What type of insurance does he have on the bus? Plus, when the bus arrived at the church, the bus driver, which was a male, a male and a female came out to greet the kids. It was approximately 25 kids. Only two Caucasian. Only two Caucasian. I wonder why. See, now.
Yeah, one minute, sir.
Now, you know, I know that under Clinton, he did away with the tactics of those institutions that were formed for desegregation. I mean, yeah, segregation purpose. He did away with the tactics. Brunswick Academy was dying, it was dead. Brunswick Academy was dying, it was dead. A family here, and a family in Brunswick, putting the kids in Brunswick Academy, Brunswick Academy exploded. We fall into the same old trap every time, trying to appease who? I wonder. But these are our kids. And no, I don't have a bad luck to kid here in the school system, but all these kids are mine, because I'm part of this village. And I'm a fighter. I'm gonna do everything I can to help those kids. Help any kid here that I can help, I'm gonna help. And I tell you this, I don't mind suing. I sued the county of Brunswick. I sued, I was down on the suit, you said, gave Virginia State Police, I was down on the Black Cuomo suit, I made National Guard here start taking blacks. I don't mind suing. So I thank you for listening, and I hope that you will listen to what I said, evaluate, do something about it, and by all means, I would like a copy of your flag policy. If you do not have one, I would like to have a copy when you formally want it.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for coming to speak to us. Dr. Edwards and his team will definitely be following up with you, not only on the policy, but also the mention of the life wise, that is only in there.
And we, if you would look into the transportation of those kids, because I'm sure that his insurance is probably one hundred, three hundred thousand, that's not enough.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else, Ms. Dunn?
That was the only speaker.
Is there anybody on the floor that would like to speak?
Good evening again. I'd just like to let you all know, in the last several years, I have been advocating at the General Assembly for funding for school construction, although normally, you know, the state doesn't look at that. And I received an email from a representative that some legislator is actually gonna put in an amendment asking for funding for school construction. So let's pray that that will come through, because our locality can definitely use it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving along to section nine is our announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Want to thank everybody definitely for coming out this evening. Moving forward, again, we have transitioned here at Greensville County High School. So proud of the progress that our students have made. A true testimony was recognizing this young man this evening for scoring a perfect score. A true testimony is those students scored not first, not second, but third place, not only in the Commonwealth, but in four other states as well. Our students and staff and faculty members are doing some marvelous things here in Greensville County Public Schools, and we wanted to keep that trend moving ever forward so that we can truly say that we are educating our students to the best of their, of our abilities, so that they can go out and be successful students and productive in today's society. On the sports side, we want to commend all our sports teams here at the high school. Playoffs have, districts have begun. Boys have finished number one and had a tough loss to Brunswick Friday night, but we're rebound. The girls were going to move forward, and at EWY, our teams are doing very well, and we look forward to their continued success. Our, in our career technical education departments, Abbott, I can go on and on and talk about the marvelous things that we're so proud of in Greensville County Public Schools. We had book fairs, and we are so fortunate to have those book fairs, as they raise much needed funds here in Greensville County Public Schools. Every time I go to Southside Virginia Education Community College and look at those students taking cosmetology, welding, electricity, it just does my heart some good, because they are going to be career-ready. And so looking forward to February the twentieth, when our students can indulge in, once again, another career fair. And if you have not done so, when you go to Chick-fil-A and look at one of those young men or young women sitting behind that counter, those are products of Greensville County Public Schools who were thoroughly trained here and went and successfully got jobs, making good wages. That not only helps them, it helps their families. And also want to say, the new immigration policies to our students that are immigrants. We're doing all we can in Greensville County Public Schools to protect you. We are forging frequently asked questions. We will divulge a complete component and put a page on our website, and we started that page, and we want to make sure that our dreamers and our students that are fearful in this unprecedented time know that they are safe in Greensville County Public Schools as we are making and doing everything that we can do to make sure that you are safe. And we are in budget season as we approach, and we're looking forward to having those continued conversations with the county and the city as we move forward. Mr. Chairman, that's the announcements for the seat.
Thank you, I was gonna add one thing with that, but most importantly, the middle school is not only having one team play in a middle school basketball championship, but both are boys and young ladies, so.
And, and number one.
That's right.
And Mr. Chairman, I just want to say also, also, health-wise, we have had a slew of flu, and what is it? I messed the word up sometime, Mr. Z, norovirus, nor, noro? Norovirus. And COVID is not gone to everybody that's out there. One point last week, we had over four hundred and fifty students out throughout the division and almost forty-five staff members. So please do all you can to protect your health. Masked up myself right now, trying to make sure that we don't get a complete bug, but there's so much going on around, please take care of yourselves, health-wise, we need you here, and we're gonna do all we can to get all these schools deep clean. And we applaud our SSC staff for making that happen.
All right, last one is adjournment, seeking a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of adjourned in the meeting, making a note by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Hope everybody has a wonderful rest of your evening.